I can call the meeting to order. First thing we'll do is pledge allegiance.
Republican allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim, I'd like to have him over to silence and prayers for the family of James Bailey, the trooper that was killed. He's a true human.
Thank you.
Okay, Cindy, you're first on the agenda.
Please.
What's going on with this chair? Okay, first thing I have is I have a transfer. What, do I look funny over here?
There's a lever on the side of it.
That's all right, I don't want to mess up.
I think it'll go lower.
Okay, all right. I'll be under the table soon, but, okay. I have a transfer that I'd like to submit on my election board. Unfortunately, when I did the budget this year, I failed to put in for all three of us. I just put in for one of us. So, because this is a small election, the primary election, I have extra funds to be able to transfer this. I was gonna come in and ask for additional appropriation, but I was able, like, to pull things from different accounts. So, that's what the first ish, the line item is for.
Okay. So, you're transferring these funds out of another line item, so we don't have to do additional appropriation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, motion by John that we allow the transfer. Second by Kim. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same, show that it passed unanimously.
Okay, and the second request is, in your packets, I sent you a letter, kind of what I was doing for the election stipend. Last year, I came and I requested the stipend for the 2022 election, and it was approved. Again, I want to have my election supervisor do some of the things that MicroVote would normally do. It really is saving the county money, and I sent you also an attachment. And as you can see, election day support is $2,400. So, if MicroVote comes in, and this primary, we have one contested race. And we're gonna have one polling location. And you would think that it would be cheaper, but it's not. If we have MicroVote come in and do it, it's $2,400. If they program the machines, it's $60 per machine, and with absentee voting, we might have maybe 10 machines. The database creation, that's $2,300. Just for those, one, that one location, it's gonna be $2,300. So, Jessie, she knows how to do that, because she's kind of worked with MicroVote. And she did have to go ahead and create the database, just because we're at a time crunch, that we have to get the ballots approved. But she saved the money, she saved the county the $2,300. But I would like to, I had said the last time, if it was a smaller election, maybe give her less money. And maybe that could be for the fall, but at least for the primary, I'd still like to give her the $750 for her doing things that are not on her job description. So, I would like to, you know, propose that she gets $750 for the primary election and $500 for the general election. Because during the general, it will be more complicated, and we will have to have MicroVote build the ballot and program over 100 machines, so.
Okay, what's your, any discussion on this?
So, right now, excuse me, right now, we're giving her $750, right?
Well, it was, it's gonna go per elec, per year, depending on how busy the election is. But for this, for the primary, I would like to give her $750, because she has saved the county money by programming these machines, by creating the database. I mean, right there, you know, that's, what is that?
So, we're not gonna hire MicroVote to do this?
No.
So, we're gonna save that?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, when there's, like, I've said this in the past, when there's an issue, when MicroVote comes in, they hire someone two weeks and they train them. So, Jessica knows more than MicroVote. A lot of times, that representative that we're paying $2,400 to, they don't know what they're doing, so then they ask Jessica to help them. And here, we've just paid them $2,400.
I'll make a motion to approve the $750 stipend for the upcoming primary election, but I would also include in my motion that we hold off for the general election stipend till we have a clearer picture on what all that's going to encompass, because I don't know if 500 would be fair.
Right.
So, let's wait and address that when that time comes, and that would be my motion.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Thor that we approve the $750 for the primary election, and that we hold off to make a decision on the fall election till we get more information. Nick, you second that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion?
I would like to expand on a little bit, the reason that I don't think that it would be fair, because we don't know on empty spots, on what party might add somebody in, so there could actually be more work to do than what we're anticipating, and I don't want to short that.
No, I appreciate.
Process.
They have till August to do that, or first of August?
Yeah, yeah.
Good point. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same, show that it passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. Now, let's see if I can get up.
Lindsay?
She is not able to be here. First, it's pretty cut and dry. They had $12,000 additional funding for JDAI, which I think she sent that in that email. And again, this is just appropriating those funds for, for her to be able to use them.
Make a motion, we approve the additional appropriation.
Motion by Thor, a second by John, that we approve the approp, additional appropriation for the JDAI program. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same, show that it was unanimous. E-911, additional appropriations.
If you want to know if this is, you would approve the updating of her phones at the last meeting. This is just the paperwork to go with it for the 3613376.
And we did that at the last meeting for the phones, 911 phones, 36,13376. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Didn't that, that was in her budget, right? That money came from her budget somewhere, right?
We're just a... Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nick.
That was Thor.
Oh, Thor, excuse me. Any additional discussion? All those, call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same. Chad, commissioners, additional, seated.
Yeah, so we talked in the past about the trust that's managed by the Community Foundation for, I think technically they call it public health. Historically, those funds were used to pay half of our bill to Park View EMS. But in 2020, that board voted to buy cots for ambulances, rather than paying for half of the bill to Park View. And there was a misunderstanding, so this balance has been out there since 2020, where the county believed that the trust would pay for half. And the Community Foundation or that board said, no, actually, they won't. But it wasn't budgeted in that year. It's been disputed since, and so, we have to pay it. The, the foundation, the trust, isn't going to pay it. So, we're here to ask for an additional $75,000 for that outstanding balance.
And to get it paid.
Right, yeah.
Chad, where we at as we move forward with the contact, contract with the Park View and?
So, the contract was renewed, I believe, last year. They're, they're three-year terms. And there was an increase of, I believe, $25,000 per year over those three years. And at the, at the end of the contract, then we'll be up to $300,000. And so, there hasn't been any discussion about what we'll do when that contract comes due. I don't know if we'll do a request for proposal or renew. I'm sure we'll probably see what's out there, but I don't know yet.
What about the foundation? Are they stepping out of it, or are they gonna come back, or?
I'm not really sure. I have not yet attended a, a meeting for that board, but I do know that Jim Auger-Bright sits on that board. You might be able to speak to it a little bit better than I can.
Yeah, last year, George told me I was on that board. We went to it. I think that last year was when we actually bought the cots for the EMS. I think this bill has been hanging out there for quite some time. I believe that George said he was gonna keep looking into it, and that. So, that, that money's in there, it's up to $2 million now. The nice thing about it, the earnings, it, it has given out about $2 million since its inception. So, it's really done what it was supposed to do. Now that earnings are up, we would certainly look for that to be able to earn more money toward some of our, our spending, so. But we haven't met, I think, met twice a year, so we haven't met yet, so. But I, but I believe that fund is up over $2,000 now. Yeah.
Which I believe is the minimum threshold for that.
It started out at 1.5.
And it was raised to, to 2 million at some time when, when Councilman Overdier was on the board.
Yeah. So, besides increasing the amount it is, they've also handed out, when it first started, that we bought ambulances back when that was started, out of it. So, the use of that money has changed a little bit, but it's still for health in the community, so. So, I, I believe we do need to get this cleaned up and, and get this passed as this bill.
My comment is, excuse me, we have a contract with Park View on the service. To me, this is just me, I'm not on that board, you are. I don't know why we paid $75,000 for cots. To me, that's part of Park View's equipment expense, not Whitley County. And we wouldn't have to pay this, come up with CETA, $75,000. That, that's my, that's my question, why we did that. That, that should be their responsibility, grab the contract for service, not equipment.
Yeah, I think when it started, this, that fund was, we didn't, we didn't have a bill like this.
Yeah.
Because the county still, at that point, had, had EMS. So, like I say, it's changed what, what, what they've done with the money. And I think, and George isn't here to talk, but I think somehow this got overlooked back in '20. You know, so I...
I think there was a push for better customer service for the, for the, and, and available equipment for the citizens of Whitley County, and I think that was a time when those cots that they used made a huge transition from just being something that you carried people on to where they were a lot more hydraulics and the things that they were able to do with them. I think that's where the price tag came from. So, I, not knowing the whole background story on it, I think there was a lot more to do with making sure that the citizens of Whitley County were getting good care and best equipment, so. Yeah, I have one question. Is that $75,000 just what we didn't pay, or are there any fees, late fees, or penalties?
Historically, we paid $75,000, and that, and that trust fund paid $75,000 for a total of $150,000.
So, you know that several years passed, do, there have not been any penalties or fees incurred?
They just want to get paid.
Yep.
So, your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we paid, it needs paid.
Have a motion from Joan that we pay the $75,000 out of, seated, request from the commissioner. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Thor. Further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, the same. Okay, one, passes. Paula?
Thank you.
Watch out, easy.
Yeah, I know, that will probably flop down.
Good morning. Well, Tiffany did all the work for this request. This initiated from our last fiscal audit. The auditors requested that any carryover funds from the, the previous year remain in a separate fund until they can audit it. So, she now has to create two funds for our grants. So, one for the previous year, and one for the current year. Once they audit this money, it will stay in that fund that she's, that you're gonna approve. And then that next grant award, that money will just be added to that. Does that make sense? I know, probably doesn't make sense. It's, it's just an auditor, and they want to be able to verify that end balance. And what in the years past, what we've done is that end balances went right. It just goes into our current year's budget, and they want it to remain in separate fund until they audit it. So, now she's had to create two fund numbers for the same fund, right?
Yeah, we did an even year and an odd year. We had to do the same thing with probation. So, they'll probably be coming with their request after they get audited.
So, we're not losing the money. They just wanted the end year balance to stay there until they come in and audit. And they're, right now, they're almost a year behind with their audits, so. And this is Department of Corrections, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear, Department of Corrections grant.
Approve setting up a separate fund.
Will you be able to use that money?
Yes.
Even though they're behind a year on?
Yeah, we don't lose it, and that's why they just wanted to set in that fund, so they can verify it. And then what they'll do when they make the next year grant award, that money will be added to that.
Okay, thank you.
Clear as mud, right?
Clear as mud.
Okay.
Yeah.
They just want to track where it's at?
Yeah.
So, do I have a motion to approve setting up a separate fund for this money? Okay. Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, the same, passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Scott Wagner?
So, last year, I completed a survey that was requested by the State Department of Health. It took several weeks to complete. With the completion of that survey, they granted us $1,000. No strings attached to that. You can do whatever you want with that money. And I'd like to be able to take that $1,000 and put it into this year's budget line item for conferences and trainings, since we usually run short in that. Last year, we had to do a transfer at the end of the year for that line item. So, that's, I'd just like to take that money that came to the county and put that into this year's budget.
Motion approved.
Motion by Thor.
Second.
Second by Kim, that we approve this transfer. Additional questions, discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those pace, opposed?
Very much.
Same, passes. Jen, Personnel Committee?
Morning.
Morning.
So, the Personnel Committee last month met after council, and we have, they have two recommendations. One is to add the county surveyor back to eligibility for longevity. And the other one is to recommend that the part-time dispatcher positions be paid the same hourly rate as the full-time dispatchers. So, right now, we have a maximum part-time pay of $22.48, and our dispatchers make $24.58 per hour. So, as I recall, those were the two recommendations.
And I, I think on the dispatch, the reason why we agreed to go to $24.58 is because the part-time people have all the credentials and all the training as full-time people, correct?
Okay. Any additional questions for Jen or any of us on the personnel? Joan, do you have any comments?
Other than I think it's fair to move the dispatcher up to full hourly rate.
Your pleasure?
Tiffany, can we do a adjustment on the entire part-time salary range? Or can we, is that required, or is it just, or, or do we have the option of singling this one out?
You can do the exceptions, which you've done before. I know we've done that for a couple people with Community Corrections. Or, I know Jen is, would really like to see that scale be raised, or have people who make, or work part-time make the same as the full-time. But it's up to you guys, if you want to do an exception or all across the board.
If we, so we can do across the board an amendment to the salary ordinance regardless of the budgetary cycle? Okay, thank you. I think it would be easier to track, and that it would probably be, makes more sense to me that we look at adjusting the, the county part-time pay structure, rather than looking at this as an individual basis, and still relying on our department heads to use that scale appropriately.
But what is the range now of part-time?
Minimum wage to $22.48.
So, we would be adding $2.10 to that range?
For this position. I don't know that you...
To cover this position.
Right, right.
If you do that, then, then the jobs below the $24.58, then the department heads are gonna have the power to take them to $24.58, even though they're, excuse me, the highest paid is $22.48. I'm not sure I want to do that even.
Well, there's a lot more part-time employees right now that are well under that $22.48 than there are right at the limit to it. I don't think it's being, I don't think it's being abused. I think our department heads are being responsible with that pay scale.
I'm, I'm not saying they're not being responsible. I'm just saying I'm not sure we want to go to $24.58 and have that, have that option for them to go that far.
It is on the agenda for today's meeting for Personnel after this, to discuss the entire part-time pay scale. And I, I did a spreadsheet where, you know, all the different part-time positions are basically classified in four different categories. And I provided a range for each of those categories.
So, there's a standard that's being put in place, and just because the range would be $50 an hour doesn't mean that they can just raise them to $50 an hour without coming through HR and the Personnel Committee?
Correct.
That was gonna be my suggestion, too, that we go ahead and approve this, and then look at the latter. And since you've done the survey, Jen, that, that just speeds this process up, that we can look at that and come back to council. Any further discussion?
I think that we're going to have a lot more to track if we start setting each department up for their own pay scale, as far as the county's concerned on a part-time hires, part-time positions. I think we need to keep it standardized.
Well, and this came about because of the dire need that was happening at the time of the request. And the dispatchers are required to have that certification and knowledge, and they can step right in and do their job without further training, because they've already been trained. So, that had a lot to do with it. And that can be discussed, planned for discussion on the Personnel Committee later this morning.
We're having enough problems trying to fill positions in the county now with, on Sheriff's Department dispatchers, so. I'll make a motion, and we take the exception today, to pay the part-time dispatchers $24.58 an hour.
Okay, I have a motion by Tom that we, today, just do the part-time dispatchers at $24.58 an hour. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joan. Further discussion?
I would just like to say that I am going to support this, because I feel that it's justified and that they need it. But I'm also going to reiterate again, that we need to have it standardized for all county employees. And with the parameters that Jennifer is putting into place, I would like for that to come back forward to us to consolidate our pay scale, as far as part-time employees.
Any other comments? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, the same, passes. The longevity on the surveyor? You want to talk anymore about that, Jen?
Well, I don't know if Tiffany has anything to add as well, but I, I don't know what the history on that was, but the surveyor has been excluded for four or five years.
Not sure how far back.
And it was requested, I think you brought it to us, the Personnel Committee, that the surveyor be added back to being eligible for longevity. I'm not really sure the history of why that position was excluded.
Is that a full-time position? How many hours do they generally work in a pay period? Some more.
I think the reasoning behind it was it's an elected position, and every other elected official, including yourselves, is eligible for longevity. Actual hired positions are a little bit different, but all elected... Um, actual hired positions are a little bit different, but all elected officials that I'm aware of are eligible for longevity with the exception of the surveyor. So I think the reasoning behind it was just to make it universal that all elected officials are eligible for longevity.
And you don't know why they were removed?
I do not. You, Tiffany?
No.
Heard things, but I don't want to speak on that because I was here during that time and I found no reason for it. I'm not sure why they were excluded.
So.
I would motion that they be included in longevity.
Have a motion by Nick that we include surveyor in the longevity program. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John? Any further discussion?
Do we need an effective date? As like, starting this night, this coming year? Or what were you thinking?
We hadn't budgeted for it, so I figured for 24 and moving forward. Or we can do an addition if we need to for.
I would, I'll amend my emotion and say it's effective in 24.
Okay. Further discussion? I ask for the question. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, the same. Passes. And Commissioner?
Um, we've had a lot going on. I'll start with, um, employee recognition for Councilman Tim Wheeler, who served the county now for 16 years. We're really grateful for that service, Councilman Wheeler. Recently, there's a, there's been a, a discussion about the cumulative capital development rate, the Keem cap rate. It was brought to the commissioners to consider, eh, raising that rate. Currently, it's at a point 0150. The max is point 0333. And at our February 21st meeting, the commissioners decided to leave that rate at, eh, 0.150. Um, yesterday, we approved a fringe benefit ordinance. It's really geared toward, um, items of clothing and county-owned vehicles. But it was something that was, um, discovered in, in an audit that, eh, State Board of Accounts recommended that we have this ordinance. Um, I think that, eh, I think it'll just help Tiffany be able to enforce some of those State Board of Accounts rules that are associated with, um, uniforms and, eh, take-home vehicles. Um, yesterday, we approved an update with, eh, an updated contract with Dossit Consulting. So a little bit about Dossit. They are, um, a consulting firm that works to, to recover or re, to, to get reimbursements for Title IVD, um, claims. And eh, last year, they were able to, eh, recover $186,000 in reimbursements. Eh, this is something that the commissioners have historically paid for from their, eh, consulting and engineering line item. Um, because it's used by multiple departments, used by the court systems and prosecutor's office. So we pay for that. And, um, it was decided that there was an, there was an increase in the price. Eh, the annual price was increased to 6,200. In years past, it was 5,500. But they did have a three-year option, eh, for a remitted rate of 17,100. So we approved the three-year rate, which equals, um, 5,700 a year. Um, so we, we, eh, approved that contract. Also, yesterday, eh, we approved the polling locations for the city primary. There's only one opposed, eh, city council race. So it's only one, eh, polling location at the Grace Luther and Church for, eh, Columbia Four and Columbia Six precincts. And then, um, yesterday afternoon, we learned from Colton at YGAN that Fox Contractors is planning to install silt fencing at the new jail location on Monday, the 13th, this coming Monday. And then they'll start moving dirt once the ground is ready. And as soon as the bulk dirt moving is, is done, then job site fence and barricades will go up, signs will go up. And Colton said in his email that he expects that to happen sometime around, eh, April 3rd. And then, um, lastly, the, there's been a lot of community discussion about solar fields lately. You guys have probably heard quite a bit about that. So, um, just a quick update that in our February 21st meeting, the commissioners asked the planning commission to enact a moratorium, which is like hitting the pause button. Um, and so we're asking for that so that we can review the county's solar ordinance, make sure we've got it right. There is one, um, company who's already filed their applications. Um, and so they'll go through the process under the current ordinance. Um, but just wanted to update you all on that as well. Any questions?
Yeah, Chad, can you say a little bit? I see Kim's in here. I've had a lot of people say, well, I got your tax bill and the taxes are going up because of the new jail. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I can. So that's, eh, that's a misunderstanding because the jail is being funded with an income tax. And that income tax was adopted in 2019 by council. Um, and so that is not a property tax. So, assessed values, eh, property taxes have nothing to do with the jail project at all.
Is that a short-term tax? That once the jail is built, after a certain time, that it'll drop off?
Um, I'm not really sure the answer to that, Nick. Tiffany, you know, is that like a, a 20-year tax or, I, I can't recall?
Don't believe that I can find out and let you know.
I appreciate it.
Again, it's a local income tax. It's, it's specifically for correctional rehabilitation facilities. And, um, it was adopted in 2019. At that time, there were being some changes made to, eh, in, in legislation to the way that that tax could be used. And we were, we council adopted it in a 5-2 vote, before the changes took effect. So if we would have waited, then there, less of it could have been used for operating expenses. Um, currently, it's 20% that can be used for operating expenses. And so I, I don't remember exactly if there's a sunset date or not, but I do remember that we, um, adopted the tax before the changes in legislation.
Then it was a tax option. It was individual to each county. Wasn't across the board, across the state, all enacted. Each county had to act on it, right?
Right, right. Yes.
Anything else for Chad? Questions? Thank you. Minutes of the February 7th meeting. And then we do have a second set for February 23rd, when we had our special meeting. So the, we'll do February 7th first.
Motion to accept is presented.
Motion by Thor that we approve as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tom. Call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, the same. Kim's abstaining. Okay, then we have the February 23rd minutes. Your pleasure on that.
Motion approved as presented.
Motion by John that we approve as presented. Is there a second? Second by Joan. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, the same.
I'm abstaining.
Nick's abstaining. Any comments from the public? Yes, Kim?
Morning. I'm Ashley Whitely, County Assessor. I just wanted to speak, you've only got this meeting and one other meeting before our notices, notice of assessments go out. Um, I just wanted to speak on that a little bit, just kind of reiterate how important those notices are. There's a lot of valuable information on there. Number one, being the assessed values. A lot of discussion that has taken place as far as the jail affecting the assessed values. Um, number one, we're not there yet. Um, we trend two years backwards. That's what the state allows us in our sales data. Assessed values are strictly driven off of the market. So as far as how this project is going to affect up or down in values, um, right now with the way our legislative laws are written, we're mandated to solely establish our assessed values based off of what the market is telling us in Whitley County. So to know that down the road, that's going to drop values in that area out there in Armstrong position, we do not know that. Um, it, it would have to take a pretty disastrous market, I would think, for that to trend around to affect those businesses. So I, I kind of want to speak on behalf of that. Um, if anybody comes to you with questions, concerns on assessed values, please, you know, that's what we're there for. That's what we're there is to talk about it. Um, you know, we've only gotten through three cycles of our cyclical reassessment. For years, decades, we went through reassessment where we were only at properties for 10 years, every 10 years. So, you know, we have a lot of, we're still, we correct data every year that is our air. It's our air to correct. Maybe we've got square footage wrong. Maybe we've got a basement there that shouldn't be, or something to that effect that we need to make those corrections. Those are the people we need to hear from. And that's the other purpose of those notices going out. So, you know, by all means, direct people to us. Um, and chances are if, when they get to the point that they want to appeal, you know, we are going to have to have market information based off the current market. That's just something that we're, we're going to have to have. But I just, I wanted to let you know that. And, um, because there's a lot of concern right now. We're, we're, between us, the auditor, the treasurer, we're already getting calls because people are freaking out, as you know, over what their dollars are going to do based off this project and the concerns there. And they're legitimate concerns. They truly are. So I just wanted to speak to that. Anybody have any questions for me while I'm here?
Questions for Kim?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Jason, you guys in the back, have you been able to hear any better today? Okay. Could you hear Kim okay? She's a little soft.
Yeah, no, I can hear.
Okay, that's.
Very different.
So if we pull these mics closer, we can, they can hear us in the back. Okay, nothing else? Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everyone.